This afternoon, as we recognize, honor, and celebrate the swearing in of an exceptional community leader, an exceptional father and husband, and that is Orlando Cruz. Let's give him a round of applause. And I would venture to say that we are all here, of course, because as proud Democrats, we love to see those who are in our tribe excel. And those who are in our tribe continue to represent as many constituencies as possible. But I'd be remiss, Chairman, if I didn't say, we are here because we know who Orlando is. We know the man that he is. We know the community servant that he is. We know the son that he is, the father that he is. And by the way, your son looks so much better than you now, man. My God, that's a good-looking kid. And most importantly, we know the husband that he is. And so Chairman, we want to just thank you and bless you for recognizing such an amazing gentleman. We want to begin with our flag salute, ladies and gentlemen. I want to bring up Patterson Police Officer Sergeant Jose Petey Torres. Petey, if you can come to the microphone. And our flag is to our left or to our right. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is sanctified, founded, and under God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you so much. Please remain standing. Come on, it's a Democratic event, folks. You should know better, okay? We want to bring up next for invocation, Monsignor Silva. Please come forward to give our blessing. He is with St. John Baptist Roman Catholic Church and Cathedral here in Patterson. Monsignor.
Orlando, congratulations and felicitad es bendiciones a su familia. Recently Pope Francis was speaking to a group of civic leaders. And he said to them, I ask you to ensure that humanity is served by wealth and not ruled by it. What beautiful words. And as you begin this leadership here in our county, you take these words to heart as we use all of our resources to serve as many people as possible to live beautiful and free lives. And so we gather in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all those who lead in our county, in our beautiful city. But in a very special way, we ask you, Holy Spirit of wisdom and fortitude, to come down upon the new county commissioner Orlando Cruz. May his mind always be open. May his heart always feel for others, so that with each day, he may make our county a more beautiful reflection of heaven. And may Almighty God bless you in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. And I have a little gift, a rosary from the Vatican. Believe it or not, I had 20 sent that were blessed by Pope Francis and my brother.
Oh, my God.
Wow.
Now you can be seated. Wow, you want to talk about divine intervention Orlando? Wow. Wow. So again, thank you all so much for being here. We have some dignitaries who are going to say some words about Orlando and about his next quest in public service. But as we look around this room, to me, this is representative of what democracy is truly about. What I know the town that we grew up in Patterson and what this county, Passaic County, is about. The many races, faces, and belief systems are representative in this room. And today, we are here to acknowledge and see the great work that Orlando Cruz will do as he joins this wonderful deist of county commissioners who are with us. And to begin that journey, we'd be remiss if we didn't bring forth the gentleman who has led the charge and continues to lead the charge for so many of us. He is the chairman of the Passaic County Democratic Committee. He is our chairman, my chairman, and your chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, John Curry.
First of all, good afternoon, everyone. To the Monsignor, to Reverend Steele, a prosecutor, sheriff, and all of our elected officials. You know, this is a big day, an exciting day for the Democratic Party. It's an exciting day for Orlando's family. I know Mom and Dad would never think that their son would be taking a position like this as much as he's done in life. I can just tell you, and if I will go through the process of what we do to select the candidates. You know, I could tell you a year and a half ago, and I've known Orlando. I was a little skeptical. I had to keep a closer eye on him because his wife is like a daughter to me because she's been in my life since she's about 17 years old. So I wanted to make sure that she was choosing white. So I've had a good eye on him for a long time. And I have to tell you, he's passed that test with flying colors. But as I have watched him work with me and work with Assemblyman Wimberly and others throughout the community, and as we got into our screening process, I asked him to come forth to my executive committee and screen at our executive committee, which out of the candidates that came for us, and we had some good ones. Him and Commissioner James was selected along with our county clerk to be our Democratic ticket this year. And we're extremely excited about him. He's passed the test. I can tell you, he's a young man with integrity. He's a young man with knowledge. And one of the things that impressed me as I tried to balance our ticket out in many ways. You know, we only have seven commissioners and three constitutional offices. I look around and see what they bring. Obviously, I have a lawyer that sits on this board. You know, I have an educator that sits on this board. I have business people that sits on this board. I have people that are retired from government service, meaning serving the people sitting on this board. You know, but when I look at Orlando's acumen and what he's done and being president of the Chamber of Commerce, both in Patterson at large and Wayne at large, now we're going to have a second businessperson that can bring to the citizens of Passaic County the various resources that we have here. You know, it's a big day. It's a huge day for us. Now, this is filling a vacancy tonight. It's his job. But I am going to count on each and every one of you to come November to see that we do everything to make his appointment permanent, that he can go on and continue the service as he will from now through December 31st, with him being elected for a full term this November. Can I count on all of you to help become successful? So Orlando, I'm counting on you. I know you're going to bring again continued balance and understanding of the many things that these commissioners have accomplished for the citizens of the county. Folks, you might not realize, but the county commissioners have 53 agencies that underneath them that they support in one way or the other, including a high school and a college. The amount of roads, and I can't remember. I know Mr. De Nova, our retired administrator, can tell us the miles of roads we have here. Or Matt can tell us, our new administrator, that we cover. But so many services and supporting the Board of Social Services as well financially along with the state funds. So they have huge responsibilities. But what makes me proud is they're the only county in the state of New Jersey that's gone on their fifth year, ladies and gentlemen, their fifth year without having $1 in county tax increases, and that's big. So ladies and gentlemen, Orlando, congratulations to you and O'Sheen and the rest of your family. I'm looking forward to see the first time I have to yell at you. God bless you.
The funny part is, most of us who know, know that's true. So before we move forward with the reason why we're all here, Chairman, I think your words are absolutely spot on. You know, I had the opportunity to meet Orlando some years ago. Many folks know, you know, O'Sheen and myself and several others served on the school board in Patterson for quite some time. And as Chairman, you see O'Sheen as a daughter. She is very much my sister, and I love her dearly. And I'll never forget, we were preparing for a campaign. I can't remember what yours or mine. But O'Sheen comes to me, we're talking, and said, what are you doing tonight? She said, I got a date. And I go, a date with who? She said Orlando. I said Orlando who? And so, you know, I said, well, I got to meet this guy. You know, me, TJ, Manny, we're all like, hey, you got to pass the big brother test in order, you know, to get to our little sister. You know, as the time progressed and as they progressed, it was like we gained a brother. And I am so grateful and appreciative of the work Orlando has done to support his wife. And I got to be frank with you, for those folks who are elected office, I think most of us know it's not easy to be the spouse or significant other of someone who is in office. And I think Orlando has been an extremely supportive husband to his wife in her service and the work that she's done. And I look forward to the work that O'Sheen will now do, you know, continue to support her husband as he moves into elected office. With that said, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call up Assemblyman Benji Wimberly, who will now administer the oath and swear Orlando Cruz in as our next county commissioner in Passaic County. Benjamin.
Good afternoon, my senior to our elected officials, Chairman. It is indeed an honor to swear in Orlando Commissioner Orlando Cruz. For the past couple of years, I've had the opportunity to have Orlando work with me as a legislative aide, and his work ethic is impeccable. Anyplace, anytime, anywhere, he will knock on doors. He will go to events. He can mix and mingle with anybody. And I had an opportunity, one of my best friends was one of his teachers at school number 10. And he said, I knew that guy was kind of involved in politics. So when you grow up and you just have that personality to his mom and dad and to the family, he is who he is. And the best part of it is, I think he's done an outstanding job representing the whole county. You know, his work with the chamber, I see Jamie out here. He follows somebody who's legendary that, you know, he's been mentored. He's been well-prepared for this. And with the chairman and so many outstanding commissioners, you're looking at a future star of the Democratic Party here in the state of New Jersey. So Orlando, congratulations to you and the family. O'Sheen, he works hard on you. I tell that you had that all the time. And even more important is that we have an opportunity now. We're actually neighbors, so we can throw a rock from our door to each other. And it's always good, besides the Dallas Cowboy flag waving up during football season. That's the only thing we got. I could put up with the Mets, Mayor, but not the Cowboys. But at this time, I'm going to ask Orlando to come forward.
Yeah, bring the baby up. Somebody can hold him.
Bless you in the Bible. You got it right. Orlando's son's a football player. Coach is checking out his workout and track. All right. Yep.
This will make him comfortable.
All right. I state your name.
I, Orlando Cruz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear few, bear true faith and allegiance.
And bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
As a county commissioner.
As a county commissioner.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And to my understanding.
And to my understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
They'll hear from me later. Got it. At this point in time.
Hear it as he takes this seat as a commissioner, folks.
Doesn't he look good behind that desk, ladies and gentlemen? All right. Next up to introduce our next speaker is my co-host for today, our wonderful councilwoman in the city of Passaic, Councilwoman Tanya Mello. Tanya?
Thank you, Dr. Irving. At this time, we would like to call for remarks. The Representative of 35th Legislative District, Senator Nellie Poe. En este momento, quisiéramos llamar a la representante del legislamiento distrito, la senadora Nellie Poe. Un aplauso.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman, Dr. Irving, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, to Monsignor Gino, to our absolute amazing and just official, our Commissioner Orlando Cruz. So I am just so very happy to be here. To all of our commissioners and to each and every one of you, let me just say that today is a wonderful day for all of us. I am very honored and privileged to be present here today. Not only, and all of you have spoken, and quite honestly, you're going to hear, you are going to hear, folks, repeat some of the same things that you've, that's already been said by the former speakers, talking about Orlando and Orlando Cruz's experience, his background, all the wonderful things that he has done. And so you're going to see or hear that repeated over and over again. Here's what I would say differently. I probably know Orlando, perhaps just as long, if not longer than most of you because of his family. I am so very happy, Millie, that your baby, your son, someone that you took so much time and so much care and so much love to raise and to be able to raise a young man as you have. And to be able to have the support of your family and making sure that that happened is a testament to you, to your family, and to your principles. It has been said that Orlando has within him integrity, decency, compassion. All of those things are true. We know that. We know that because of the roots of his family and the people around him and the people that love and support him. Passaic County, Mr. Chairman, is getting that very person. Passaic County residents are getting the very people that we've known all our lives. I want to congratulate him. I know that he is going to work hard. I know that he is going to give it its all. I know that he is going to represent all the residents of Passaic County, regardless, regardless of what side you may be on. When he now has taken the oath of office and you have all witnessed that, he will absolutely be true to his word. He will be a person that will work hard, as I've already said, and someone that I know will put this county forward. So ladies and gentlemen, let me just say and share with you this very happy moment and to congratulate our dear friend, our, my friend, someone who I know will not only lead for today, tomorrow, but for as long as we, the people of this great county, continue to allow him to serve in that position. And in the good words of our dear chairman, we certainly hope it's for a very long time. Congratulations. Felicidades, felicidades a todos ustedes, a toda la familia. Lo quiero mucho, un gran abrazo. Gracias.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we would like to call for remarks. County Commissioner Director Pat Lepore. Próximo vamos a llamar al director de comisionado, Pat Lepore.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It gives me incredible, incredible pleasure to welcome our newest Commissioner, Orlando Cruz, to the Board of County Commissioners. As your director, and by the way, I am your boss, but it's a little joke. The, I knew firsthand that Orlando was the right person for this job. During our campaign, Terry Duffy, the sheriff, and myself, it was a very difficult campaign. And we took great, great pleasure and great solace knowing that a man like Orlando Cruz and his wife, O'Sheen, were behind us and working very hard to reelect us to this board. Orlando has an amazing ability of connecting with people, either in the business community or the residents or his fellow commissioners. He has a great talent of talking, being able to talk to people and get his point across and get people to understand. He's compassionate. He's amazing when it comes to the work that he does, not only in the Chamber of Commerce, but also in the community at large. And I can tell you, you're joining a great group of people, Orlando. You have business people on the board. You have attorneys. You have government agencies on the board, represented on this board. And you have a welcome, you are welcome to serve with us. We're happy to have you here, and I can't wait to hit the ground running with you. Commissioner, congratulations and welcome to the board.
To continue with our recognitions, I'd like to bring up Cheryl Kraus. She is Deputy Chief of Staff for Congressman Josh Gottheimer. Cheryl?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here, Chairman. Very nice to see you. The congressman wishes he could have been here with you tonight, but he said me, sent me in his stead. Commissioner, congratulations. The congressman has sent you a congressional certificate of recognition in honor of all the work you have done and will continue to do for the people of Passaic. So thank you very much. He has also sent you a flag that he had flown over the United States Capitol in your honor and in recognition of you assuming office. So thank you very much, and thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Next, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to hear from the leader of our city, the great city of Patterson, New Jersey, Mayor Andre Saye. We are a team here in Passaic County, and our coach is Chairman John Curry. And you heard Coach Curry said that we got to get this young man elected in November. I want to let you know, last year, we walked and made sure that our team got over the finish line. This year, I'm already talking you up. As a matter of fact, we've been talking about Commissioner Cruz. Been all the rage. In fact, one woman stopped me and said, I can't wait to vote for Victor Cruz. So Coach Wimberly said he's a Cowboys fan. I'll take it because if it's a Giants fan and she wants to vote for Victor Cruz, she's going to vote for Cruz one way or another. And when you win, you'll do the salsa, right, Commissioner Cruz? Last week, when I had the honor and the opportunity to nominate him at our Democratic County Committee, I said that he was a logical choice, Jamie, because Commissioner Orlando Cruz possesses a passion for Patterson. Commissioner Orlando Cruz possesses a passion for Passaic County. But above everything, Commissioner Orlando Cruz possesses a passion for public service. And during the pandemic, many small businesses suffered. And he took over the reins from Jamie Dykes, who did a stellar job. And he had big shoes to fill. But Orlando has been on the ground, engaging those small businesses because we know how much they've struggled and continue to do so. So now small businesses have a voice in Orlando Cruz. Patterson has a voice in Orlando Cruz. And so I'm glad that we have an opportunity to voice our support for Commissioner Victor, I mean Orlando Cruz, tonight and in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We're now going to have a music selection video. Gracias a Calde, ahora tenemos un video musical. Well, I just want to share really quick that spectacular singer that is O'Sheen's little brother. So let's give him a round of applause. Guess it is a family full of stars. Quiero dejarle saber que ese cantante que ustedes vieron, él es el hermano pequeño de O'Sheen. So la familia tiene muchas estrellas. Vamos a seguir. Okay, we're going to follow. Our next remarks will be by Eli Burgos, Passaic County, New Jersey Democratic State Senate Committee. Los próximos comentarios serán de Eli Burgos, Passaic County Democratic Committee.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Passaic County. How do you follow something like that, Orlando? I mean, you know, that, you know, we...
I wanted to sing.
You know, the Puerto Ricans have been part of Passaic County for over 70 years. And before that, we learned so much from our Italian brothers and sisters, and they learned a lot from the Irish, you know, brothers and sisters. And that's what make this community, you know, so diverse and so good. So thank you very much for being here in this celebration. I'm honored to have been asked to express a few words about my friend Orlando Cruz, the newest addition to the Passaic County Board of Commissioners. But before I do that, I want to say to TJ Best that TJ, wherever you are, you have been an excellent example of what a good public official is. You embody all the qualities that bring dignity and respect to county government. I'm proud to, I'm proud of the work that you accomplished. Good luck, Godspeed, my friend. You've earned it, wherever you are. That deserves a round of applause. So we're here today to witness a very important function of our county government. Today, the County Commissioners will not replace TJ Best. TJ Best cannot be replaced, for his legacy will forever be a part of this institution. No. Today, the Passaic County Board of Commissioners welcomes its newest member, one of Passaic County and Patterson's most outstanding young man, a leader in every sense of the word, a very educated, experienced, time-tested, energetic, and very personable individual at such a young age. To speak of Orlando Cruz, we have to first speak and acknowledge his pedigree. Where did he grow up? And to whom do we credit his success and ascension to the pinnacle of our county government? Today, you'll hear or have already heard much about the qualities that characterize Orlando. But I also want to recognize the importance of having a mother like Millie and grandparents that he calls mommy and papi, Antonio and Paola Mulero. They have been friends for over five decades, and they are absolutely pioneers of what we know as the Puerto Rican Hispanic community. We worked very, very hard in this community for the success it's had. They epitomize what a caring, loving family that always gives back to its community looks like. And when we include Orlando's wonderful, hard-working wife, O'Sheen, well, we can all see why, because of them, we are a better Passaic County. Combined with many other family members and having the good sense to create valued friendships and associations, these are virtues that are ingrained in a person such as Orlando. I want to thank Chairman Curry and the entire Passaic County Democratic County Committee. Your selection of Orlando Cruz is not just the right one, but in the annals of county history, Orlando Cruz now becomes the first person of Hispanic heritage to become a member of the Passaic County Board of Commissioners. An acknowledge and acknowledgements go out to Sonia Rosado and Mayor Hector Laura, who as persons of Hispanic heritage previously served on the Passaic County Board of Freeholders. Again, thank, again, thank you for the honor and privilege of addressing you this afternoon. I look forward to collaborating with Commissioner John Bartlett. He and I have had conversations recently about writing about the legacy and the history of the Latinos and the Puerto Ricans here in Passaic County and what they mean to this county. So I look forward to the support of this entire Board of Commissioners headed, hopefully by the, not only its president, but also by Orlando Cruz in this endeavor. Thank you very much, and it's an honor, Orlando, to see you sitting there, you know, representing all of Passaic County because that's what you've always done. And when you learn from people like Jamie Dykes, you can't go wrong. Can't go wrong. Thank you.
That's the reason why Eli Burgos is the OG in Patterson. He is truly, truly someone special in our community. Eli, thank you so much for your own words. All right, folks, so without further ado, it's our pleasure to hear from the gentleman for why we're all here. I think many of us who sit here today, you know, who smile and beam at this moment, I think share in this opportunity and the love for who Orlando is, you know, his mother, his family, you know, Jamie Dykes, his mentor and friend, Eli as a mentor as well, the Seminarian, you know, as his current boss, as legislative aide, and many of us do so. You know, Orlando is a great friend of mine. He is a brother to me, and he's also my golf buddy in the summers. Without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Orlando Cruz.
The speech is not long. I just put the text really big so I don't forget anything. And I don't want to keep you guys from the delicious food we have downstairs. Once we're done here, we have a small reception down in the lobby. I want to start by thanking the chairman. Unfortunately, he had to leave for another swearing-in, just as important as mine, in the judicial system here in Passaic County. So I want to extend congratulations to the new judge that's being sworn in. Thank you, Chairman, for your vision and leadership. I know you're going to go back and watch this video, so I do have to say thank you or else, or else that'll be the first time I get yelled at. To all the speakers that spoke, thank you for your kind words. You know, when O'Sheen and I were going through and creating this program, you guys were selected for a reason, and you guys really came and hit it out the park. So thank you again to the municipal leaders and the county committee for voting on me to get to this point. Thank you for all the work you do, and I look forward to continuing the great work and working alongside you to serve the people of Passaic County. So today is a great day of significance for me as I stand before you as a newly sworn member of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm truly honored to have been given this opportunity, and I'm humbled by the faith that has been placed in me. I want to begin by thanking all of you that are here today. Your presence means a great deal to me. I'm deeply grateful for your support, and I'm also grateful to my family, who has always been there for me, providing me with love and encouragement. They've helped me achieve this goal today to my mom, my sister, George, my grandparents. Thank you, guys. I have uncles and aunts here, cousins. Thank you all for coming. You guys have always been there for me. To my wife, because I have to go home with her tonight. Oftentimes, we hear the saying that behind a great man, there's an even greater woman. I've been blessed to not only have a great woman to have my back, but also stand proudly beside me. I want to take this moment to express my deepest appreciation for everything that you do. Since the beginning, you've been a constant source of love, support, and inspiration. I'm endlessly grateful for your unwavering commitment to our family. Through our triumphs and challenges, you've always believed in me. Even when I didn't believe in myself, you've always been my biggest cheerleader, sounding board, and confidant. Your love and support has been the foundation upon which I live my life. You have given me the courage to pursue my dreams, to reach for the stars. I'm a better person today because of the faith you have in me. Now, I understand as we embark on this journey together, there will come sacrifices, but please know that I appreciate everything you do for me and the boys, and I'm committed to being the best partner that I can be now and always. Together, we've gotten here. We will continue to achieve what we set our minds to, and I'm excited for the things that the future holds for us. I love you. So as I look out in this crowd, I see colleagues, friends, fellow community members, all who have played in part, a big part in shaping who I am today. I'm honored to be standing here today as a representative of each and every one of you, but I specifically would like to take this moment to acknowledge my friend and mentor, Jamie Dykes. You guys have heard him be mentioned many times today already. Jamie, I want to take this moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for all the guidance and support that you've provided me. Your wisdom and expertise has been invaluable to me, has helped me grow both professionally and personally. Your ability to listen without judgment, offer constructive feedback, share your own experience, those experiences have made a significant impact on my career. Your encouragement and belief in my abilities has given me the confidence to pursue my goals and push me past my limitations. I'm fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with someone as knowledgeable and experienced as you. Your mentorship has not only helped me achieve my goals, but it has also helped me become a better version of myself. Thank you again for your kindness and guidance, and I will always be grateful for your contributions. Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, we have work to do. I'm inspired by the immense potential that exists in our county. We have a rich history, a vibrant culture, and a beautiful landscape that's second to none, but we also face our fair share of challenges. As a member of this board, I'm committed to working tirelessly to address these challenges and build a brighter future for generations to come. To do this, we must all work together as community, working collaboratively and with a sense of purpose. We must be willing to put aside our differences and work towards a common goal. We must be willing to listen to each other, understand each other's perspectives, and find common ground. I believe that we can do this. I believe that we can create a county that is both prosperous and equitable for all, but it will not be easy. It will require hard work, dedication, and a willingness to take risks. As a member of the Board of Commissioners, I'm committed to doing my part. I'm committed to working with my fellow commissioners to develop policies and programs that reflect the needs and aspirations of everyone in our county. But I can't do it alone. I need your help. I need your support, and I need your continued guidance and ideas. Together, we can build a county that is truly worthy of our legacy. Today, I'm reminded of the words of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, who said, "The time is always right to do what is right." So I say today, as I stand here before you, that that time is now. The time is right to come together, to work together, and to build together. In closing, as Eli mentioned, we made history. As I took the oath of office, I became the first Puerto Rican male to serve as a Passaic County Commissioner. So now, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and speak directly to my Latino community. Mi querida comunidad latina, me dirijo a ustedes con gran emoción y humildad. Para mí va a ser un honor representar a ustedes en la junta de comisionado del condado. Como un latino, me siento sumamente orgulloso de esta oportunidad de servir y luchar por nuestros derechos y necesidades. Sé que nuestra comunidad ha enfrentado muchos desafíos. Sin embargo, a través de mi trabajo y dedicación, me comprometo a asegurarme de que nuestras voces sean escuchadas y de que nuestras necesidades sean atendidas. No me detendré hasta que nuestras preocupaciones sean escuchadas y seamos tratados con igualdad y el respeto que no merecemos. En mi posición como comisionado, me aseguraré de trabajar para abogar para nuestras familias, nuestras empresas, y nuestras comunidades. Quiero ser la voz que hable por aquellos que no se sienten escuchados y luchar por los derechos de todos, los latinos, en nuestros condados. Agradezco a todo por su confianza en mí y espero trabajar junto para hacer que nuestra comunidad sea más fuerta, fuerte, y próspera. Muchísimas gracias y que Dios lo bendiga.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this moment, we would like to call the leader of my city, City of Passaic, our mayor, Hector Laura. En este momento, me gustaría llamar para unos comentarios al dirigente de nuestra comunidad, el alcalde Hector Laura.
Good evening. Congratulations, Commissioner Cruz. To all of the commissioners, all of the elected officials, I'm all here in the county. Today is a wonderful day for our county. I do take this point, I know it's a day of celebration, just to explain, forgive me for coming in late to your ceremony. We had a sudden and unexpected loss in our family, and I was just from there, but I wanted to come running in. And I share that only because there's so much that goes on in our lives, and these ceremonies become even more special when you consider what they mean, when there are families that are in need and face adversity and challenges. Commissioner Cruz will continue a long legacy and tradition of serving those when they are in their most vulnerable state. I was considering some of the answers that I was giving to those in this situation right now in my own family, and I want to thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for taking on this role in leadership because there are times in the county considering the great need of our communities, those who often face homelessness, those who face challenges when it comes to food or programs or just navigating the very stormy waters of bureaucracy, to have an individual of such caliber, of such quality, an individual with great business acumen, an individual that, those of you who don't speak Spanish, take my word for it, speaks it flawlessly and can translate so easily. I was amazingly impressed by that great job. I say with that perspective that the need to have leaders like yourself working along your colleagues, to be there in the community in times of trouble, need, crisis, adversities, it becomes even more important and paramount. I have seen your work. I've seen your family's commitment to the residents of this county, and I just thank you so very much for answering the call to lead in these times. I started where I started, just to let you know that I do have to run out, but I wanted to be here for you because I believe in your leadership. I believe in this board, and I wanted to stand here on behalf of our city to say that you can count on our support and our community to continue to fight for the work that this great board is doing along with your team and colleagues. Thank you so very much, and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we do our benediction, we do just want to recognize other dignitaries and friends, and let me be clear, you're all special who sit in this room. So if I don't read your name, blame Lou, okay? Because he's the one that gave me the list. We have Senior Vice President, Burby College, Terry Judah, who's joined us. Terry, good to see you. Former freeholder Assad Akhtar. Assad, good to see you, buddy. I saw you walk in somewhere. Patterson Public School Superintendent, Ms. Eileen Schaefer. Hey, Eileen, good to see you. Woodland Park Mayor Keith Kazmark, and members of the governing body in Woodland Park, some of the council individuals who are here as well. We have Patterson School Board Member Manny Martinez, who's here. He's the one holding Elijah as the good godfather that he does. We also have Prosecutor Camila Valdez, who's with us as well. And Lou made it very clear, you have to make sure you mention my wife, County Clerk Danielle Ireland-Hamhull. He's a smart man. He's a smart man, and he left you last. All right, folks, you know, on behalf of Orlando and his family, thank you all so much for allowing Tanya and myself to be here to celebrate this wonderful moment. This is special, and I think we will remember this day because Orlando, truthfully, brother, this is the first step to a very long and prosperous career in public service. And I think many of us will have the opportunity to say we were here when it began, and we will watch it grow, flourish, and flow as we move forward. So to close this out, as we began, you know, with the Catholics, we got to end up, you know, with Baptists too. We're going to have Reverend Steele come forward and give our benediction in our closing. Reverend Steele.
I invite you to rest on your feet. Congratulations, Orlando. The benediction is the beginning of the blessings, and in this journey, you're going to need that. And I want you to know, your journey will not be by yourself. We will be with you. We're going to work from today to make sure that you are victorious because your victory is our victory, and together, we can do a great thing. And together, we can do great things. God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this moment. We take not your grace for granted. We thank you, oh God. We ask your blessings, your protection, and your provision on our lives. We pray your blessing on the food and the fellowship. But we be mindful, even in this time, it's not what's on the table, but who's around the table. Allow us to embrace each other, love each other, and bless each other. Blessed, we pray, in Jesus's name. Amen. There's food downstairs, food, fellowship, and fun.